Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here at Tuesday on February 16, 2016. It is 6:05. We'll call 6:05 here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. We're now calling the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting to order. I want to note that Councilperson Rose Myers will not be here tonight. Councilperson Gary Couch is running late, so hopefully he'll make it. But we do have a form to start the meeting. I'd like to call upon Pastor Terrence with Grace Bible Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilperson Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
Would you bow with me in prayer, please? Our Father, as we gather this evening, our hearts are full of gratitude. We are grateful for the day that you have given us. We understand that you are sovereign over all of life and all beings, and you hold all life in your hands, and the fact that you have given us this day is a day of your grace, and we thank you for that. Thank you, Father, that you have revealed yourself to men. We see you in creation. We see your power and glory and authority. We even have your law written upon our hearts, and we know of you because of that law that is written in our hearts, and we know of your standards, your righteousness, the things you call us to do. You've given us minds to apprehend the truth, and we thank you for that. We thank you, Father, as well for this city council and for our mayor. You have told us to respect and to honor them, and we do just that. We are grateful for these people who serve us. We are grateful, Father, that they are your servants, doing your work and your will. And to that end, Father, we pray that they would know your mind, your understanding, your moral law as they govern and lead today. Give them your wisdom and your discernment in all the things that they decide, and may our community benefit from their actions this evening and throughout their terms of service here. We pray in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
If you would join me, the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas Pledge. Honor of Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Note, Councilman Couch is now here. At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. Those items being the first one, consider approving the council meeting minutes, February 2, 2016 workshop, and the regular meeting. The second one being consider approving ordinance 1604, amending the budget for the general tourism funds for the fiscal year 2015-2016, which is noted at the workshop. And also to consider approving a financial advisory agreement between the City of Granbury and Hilltop Security Incorporated, which is basically, they've changed the name from Southwest Security to Hilltop, and most of that stays the same. And also to receive the 2015 racial profiling report, this report that we receive every year from our law enforcement agency, and it is due in March the 1st. And Councilpeople, I'll have an opportunity to look at those, look at that report. So, Council, is there any items on there that we'd like to pull off that item or to discuss? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, as noted.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on the consent agenda, Council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
That consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda, that first item being to consider adopting Resolution 1602, approving an application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Capital Fund Program. And we also got Jake Adams in our audience today. We're gonna let him speak first, Chris.
Sure.
So Jake Adams with the Public Service, would you like to talk about that a little bit to the Council, please?
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, before you tonight is an application resolution, I'm sorry, a resolution to submit an application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for a Texas Capital Fund grant. We are wanting to use these funds to provide water service out to Equabrand's new facility that they intend to build out by their main office on 377. They are proposing to build a 94,000-square-foot manufacturing facility, basically doing what the one here on Highway 51 did, but since it was destroyed, they're looking to move it out by that other corporate office. The grant that we are submitting will be a total of $493,700, with a construction and engineering budget of $458,700. That will install 8,120 feet, linear feet, of water line plus valves and a fire hydrant and some other appurtenances with that, as well as a $35,000 grant administration fee, which will be paid out of the grant. The administration and engineering contracts will be paid out of the grant. And Equabrand has pledged through constructing its facility and purchasing the land to match this grant for $4,350,000. At this time, there's obviously some more kind of detailed stuff about the application that we could address, but that's the big brunt of it. If y'all have any questions about this application, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jake. Council, do you have any questions for Jake? Councilman Allen?
Jake, we're spending a million dollars for a grant. What does that actually cost the taxpayers?
Half a million.
So, yes, sir. This is gonna be about half a million, that $493. And this is the same program as y'all are working on with the mesquite pit. However, this is purely a grant. That mesquite pit, if I understand staff correct, that is a loan that the business will pay back to the city. This is a real grant, and so it is a one-to-one match on this, but that match amount is being paid by the business through the construction of their facility. And so for the taxpayers and for the city, it's nothing out of your pocket.
What?
And there will also be, I apologize, there will also be a contract between the city and the business that if there are any kind of construction overages, once this does go out to bid and we actually get into it, that those overages above this grant amount will actually fall onto the business.
If there's no cost to the city, then why, what's half a million?
Say what?
If there's no cost to the city, what is a half a million dollars for?
All right, so that is actually gonna be the construction of the water and engineering and everything. If we did not receive this grant, Equabrand has said if they can't get any kind of assistance like this for infrastructure to their new facility, they will most likely have to leave the city.
I understand that, but my question is, I don't understand the half a million dollars. The city's not liable for any money? Are we liable until they pay it back a half a million?
No, sir. This is a grant, and so that half a million, the state is gonna give that to the city to pay for the construction. The city, once we get that contract with the business that basically states that the business takes full liability for that half a million dollars. And I've already spoken to Chris, as well as Ava, that that contract, this application is not a contract that the city's bound to at this point. Once we find out that the state will award the city this grant, then we will go ahead and enter into a contract between the city and the business that says that the business, if anything should happen, is liable for that half a million dollars.
Okay. Is that in the city limits of Granbury?
It is about half a mile, I believe.
It's in the ETJ.
Yes.
Okay. Are we gonna be annexing them into the city for taxes?
Not yet.
When would we look at that?
Will we talk about that in executive session?
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. And how about the rate? Will we talk about that in the executive session?
We can, yeah. We hadn't talked about all that with them.
Okay. And is it big enough that we can put other people along the way, like if we do Knox Ranch, that they can add on to the lines?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I had a lot of questions for you, but I just wanted to make sure.
That's why I'm here. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Parsons?
I don't know if the question's specific for him, but is there any right-of-way to be acquired, or do we have state highway to right-of-way, or I don't see?
I don't know the answer to that question. Maybe Ava can answer that question.
It'll be down the state highway, actually where we found, and actually part of the Hood County right-of-way as well, going down to Meadowood, is where we're planning on putting it.
And I have already talked to EHT, who worked on the preliminary budget on this, and explained to them kind of the process we'll go through to get the permits from county and Texas DOT. And I am planning to submit this application, granting y'all's approval, on Monday, and the state has said probably by the end of next week, we'll know whether or not we'll be awarded this month. And at that time, I will then contact the engineers, and they will begin their correspondence with Texas DOT and Hood County as far as that right-of-way.
What happens if we get approved and Texas DOT says no?
That is an engineering question. Generally, and Ava and Chris can probably speak more to that.
They can't.
Yeah. They...
It's public right-of-way.
Yeah, they...
It is public right-of-way. They will allow all utilities to go down there. Right now, they do, and actually they even have designated zones that have telecommunications, water, sewer, everything, and they actually have the distances often right-of-way, so we're good on that.
And the final thing is, if I'm not mistaken, once we are awarded this, then there will be a contract from Texas Department of Agriculture come back before this council again.
Chris, would you tell us a little bit about Equabrand and what we're talking about here in terms of economic development and effect on the city?
You bet. Many of y'all are probably aware that they sustained a very large fire that knocked their operations out, and they own land in another community, and that other community's been trying to attract them to their community for over five years, and we're working hard to keep them here. This grant application says that they're gonna retain those workers that have been displaced, and so that's a key component to this grant. This grant is designed for job creation or job retention, and because it meets that criteria, we can apply for these funds from the state of Texas. It is strictly for economic development. This is for public infrastructure, what we're applying for, and it'll get water to their site that they need. They don't need a lot of water except for fire suppression on a 92,000-square-foot building with 80-plus employees. It doesn't take a lot of water for the employees, but it does take a lot of water for fire suppression. And so this is gonna allow them to meet the fire code and be able to put in a fire suppression system in the building and have adequate water supplies to meet their needs. Without the grant, this deal won't happen. That's how important it is.
Chris, was it 80 or 200 employees they had?
80. I believe...
That's just at that plant?
Yes, so the 200, and I was talking to Ed Pender about this yesterday, that 200-plus is the entire company. At this old Highway 51 facility was 77 employees. Out on 377 currently is mid-40s, and so here in Granbury, they have over 100.
And the economic impact of that is substantial, and I've done a model of that, and I can email that to y'all if you hadn't already got one. But it's very important to our community to keep those manufacturing jobs here. As you know, we're always trying to diversify our economy, and the worst thing that can happen is we lose an existing business, so...
This is a well-established business. The world, I mean, they ship all over the world, and then they've got the opportunity to grow, especially with the new facility coming onboard that they're gonna build and stuff, so...
Yeah, it's not a, the only question, the only question mark in this deal is are we gonna get the grant by, in time for them to make a good decision to move forward? And if they don't get this award, if we don't get the award for this grant, they're gonna have to find another location.
And Jake did share with me earlier that this is a good time. Is that right, Jake? I mean, it sounds, and you really feel confident in getting this at a really rapid pace, so...
Yes, sir. We do have a pretty good score for February. The minimum score on this grant's 45. We're coming in at 55 points, which, that sounds kind of low, but actually for February, that's historically a very good score going into February. Obviously, this is a grant. We never know exactly who else is gonna be applying, but applying this month with that score, I do feel fairly confident that we'll get awarded.
Hey, Council, any more questions for Jake? Pause here a little bit for Mr. Couch to return. So if there's no further questions there, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Resolution 1602, approving an application for funding through the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Capital Fund Program.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Is there any more discussion on this item, Council?
Well, I think Chris has laid it out pretty apparently, that it's economic development, and an added bonus is we're gonna get, what is that, 8,000 feet of water line out on the west side of town.
No further questions or concerns? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Jake.
Thank y'all.
Jake, you need to leave real quick. If you need, I'll sign this thing.
I'll hang around for a few minutes.
Okay. Our next item is to discussion and possible action related to the staff report pertaining to the request made by Council on December 1, 2015, to look into the possibility of designating lanes for golf carts, conduct a traffic study for Hill Boulevard South, and to contract Port Rancis, Texas, and inquire about how they regulate and use the golf carts in their cities. Council, you've looked over the report. All these things have happened. There's, they've done the traffic study. You've looked at the numbers of that. They did some research and did some talk with some, I think, the chief of police and stuff at Port Rancis. And they've also looked at the possibilities of the individual lanes. I will say that there didn't seem to be a real positive attitude towards the individual lanes. I have to agree that, you know, going out and making separate lanes for that's probably not a good idea. Port Rancis, as you looked at the study there, they don't have a lot of what we have. They don't have a golf cart community. It's basically just ports and things like that, and most of the time you do, and then the traffic study, and I will say that a lot of times on the traffic study, you really are, you're doing those to indicate where stop signs need to be, additional lines need to be, things like that, and it doesn't really restrict traffic unless you wanted to restrict probably bicycling or pedestrian traffic or something, but we're not here to restrict any traffic. We're seeing if it's possible to go ahead and open these additional roads up over in that area to where the folks there that own golf carts within the two-mile radius of the golf course can continue to take their golf carts to the golf course. So with that said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to Councilman Allen. He had this on the agenda to start with. Councilman Allen, do you wanna open this discussion up?
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, I drive my golf cart, personally, a good little bit, and most time I do it right in my neighborhood, but I've been, since our last meeting, I've been to Walmart, 'cause I know, three times. Went to the show once with my wife, and I cheated and went across Lowe's. You can do that on the parking lot, the way it is now. You go to the theater, go to Stonewater, go through the Lowe's parking lot, and you're there, out back, not at back, I'm sorry, a couple eating places. And talking with people, and I haven't had a lot of positive or negative on it, to be honest with you, Mayor, but there was a couple people that said, you know, on Third and Fourth Streets, they didn't have it, and they couldn't cut across to eat or even go to the golf cart, golf course, the way it was laid out. So I would love to see this pass and get it over with. We have a problem, we're gonna take it to the staff now and let them do it. We have a problem, bring it back to us.
Council, any more discussion on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
So, Mr. Allen, you said there's some people in the neighborhood that can't make it to the golf cart, the golf course?
Yes, they're on Third, behind CVS. The way it is, it's cut off right now.
Presently, what we have is South Town. Those roads aren't restricted for golf cart traffic, but the road that they have to get onto, which is the extension of Harbor Lakes Drive, it stops right there at the flags.
Okay.
So in order to get out of Third, Fourth Street, which they can drive them there, but they can't get onto the Harbor Lakes Drive without getting permissible to drive on that road, which is also 30 miles an hour, I might state. And so that would allow them also, in South Town, which they live two miles from the golf course, to purchase a golf cart and be, inhabit Harbor Lakes.
So we're still wanting to stick with the two-mile radius?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Council, any more discussion?
Well, I know this would be convenient for some people, but it's just, it's just hard for me to look at the recommendation of our Safety Committee and go against that, you know, that recommendation.
More discussion?
I'm reticent to have golf carts on Hill Boulevard, behind Lowe's and around that corner there. There are one, two, three, four unaligned streets there, and then the two that are aligned is the opening into CVS and into Chase Bank. If you try to pull out of CVS and go left or on either one of those exits out of there, those are blind corners, and you can't see past that. So I'd be reticent to put it on that part of Hill Boulevard.
You know, that's, I agree with you, Mr. Parsons. I, it's actually kind of dangerous even with a car there. It gets pretty hectic right there in that little intersection right there, which I don't see that there'd be a lot of traffic up through there with that. Like I said, most of the golf carts, and I've talked even to the police office stuff, they don't even see the golf carts driving, and they do drive around and go to the golf course. I've never seen any of them going up to where Mr. Allen said, but I'm sure there are a few that. The thing is, we've got people that have, right now, driven up there, driven to places and weren't aware that it was not permissible, so they've came, and matter of fact, this is all came about by one individual saying, hey, I wanna drive on Hill Boulevard, but I see that it's not, one of the roads is not permissible. So people have done it, because people have come to me and said, I didn't know it wasn't permissible. I just assumed that 30 miles an hour, you could drive. Even when we first started this, I myself, I had a golf cart coming out of Water's Edge, and I drove my golf cart to the golf course. And then we changed the speed zone so that we could be safe in doing so, and then it all enlightened, well, maybe we need to permit these people to be driving. But people drove on the, to the golf course and stuff before it was even, I guess you might say, permissible. But now we're making it to where they know, the people know, which roads are permissible, which is the 30 mile an hour zones, and all those are that there now. And so in order to get the other folks where they can go and, and oh, by the way, purchase a golf cart and pay a fee at the golf course, if that's where they're gonna go, they pay a fee to have that golf cart there, which brings in revenue also to the golf course.
150 bucks a year?
It's 460 bucks a year to put that golf cart. They can't, they don't just drive it to the golf course. They have to pay to put that on the golf course. So there is a fee involved. And so this will allow all those folks that live in those other areas within the two-mile radius to also do that as well as the folks that have been doing it for several years now. I think that if we go forward with this, that there might be an opportunity to put some additional signage out there that there is golf cart traffic on some of those, especially the one you mentioned there, Councilman Parsons, about some of those blind spots in there, because I know we do do them on the golf course where there's, where they cross over, and there's bushes and things like that. I know there's a couple places where you cross over those roads, just being on the golf course, that you, it's a blind spot, and you pop out there. So there are signs there that there is golf cart crossing right there. So we could probably do the same with golf cart traffic being involved in the roadways also. I, for one, every time I've driven my golf cart, I probably, one to two people pass me. It's never an issue if, and usually that's from the takeoff. They don't accelerate as fast as other, as the cars do, but most of your golf carts, and if they're, if they go less than 25 miles an hour, which most of them go over that because they don't wanna put the slow-moving vehicle on it. Mine goes over 25 miles an hour, but I don't max it out all the time, so there's times I might be driving under 25. But with 25 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour speed zone, you're within five miles to six miles or seven miles of the speed zone, and if people are passing you at a pretty good rate of speed, then they're pushing the bar to going over the speed limit there, so...
Which would bring up my thinking on Harbor Lakes Drive from Second Street on back to the, called it, to the circle there. Normally, there are cars parked on both sides of that street, and if a car was to try to pass you in a golf cart on that street, there wouldn't be enough room for anybody in there. It's very, very narrow through that, through that part, from the motel zone down to the circle.
Council, any more discussion?
Mr. Parsons may be right on that. I honestly have never paid any attention to it, never.
Water's Edge or?
No, no.
Hill Boulevard?
Well, no, no, Water's Edge, Harbor Lakes.
Harbor Lakes, right.
I'm sorry, Harbor Lakes.
Yeah, and, but that is the widest part of the street all the way down through there until you get to the circle, and then when you get around it, it narrows down around, you know, around a golf course.
There's always trap, there's always cars parked on both sides
Yeah.
of that from the circle all the way out to the, I guess that Second Street. I'm pretty sure that's Second Street.
Yeah, Second, Second all the way to the fourth and fifth, actually, on the other side there, to Plinko Drive.
I would, I would like to add that examples of the licensing that were provided, I don't, I don't wanna encourage that at all. I believe we've got some safety standards that need to be observed, and I think that if they're gonna drive along the street, we need to make sure that they are licensed individuals, like the ordinance currently calls for. And I think some of the concerns in our previous conversations were children driving golf carts that were loaded up with kids hanging all over it, going up down the streets, and we need to, we need to probably rescue those people before they get hurt, I guess. But I know that y'all have got a general idea. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't think, we don't have adequate staff to handle that kind of a licensing program, and if you wanted to go into that, then we're gonna need to talk about the administrative level, what we need to do to accomplish that.
And I agree that some of that stuff that was brought forth with Port Rancis is, I don't know if it was to make it difficult, but the licensing part of it, a fee for licensing, it's, I don't think that we need to...
They write a lot of tickets, is what the chief told us.
But we could still, I mean, we can still monitor that with the, you know, like you said, people have to have a driver's license. It can't be kids, and they can't be acting up. They gotta stop at stop signs. They gotta do everything. They gotta have a driver's license. license. I mean, they have to have insurance, they have to have, you know, to drive them on the golf course, they, they check them. You get a tag when you take it to the golf course, and you get it tagged, you get it registered with the golf course. Now, some, there'd be a very few people that probably won't use it for the golf course purposes, but drive over to, to the golf course or that distance and back. But all in all, it's mostly for the people that are going to be utilizing these things to go to the golf course. There's people that store them right there in the storage buildings on Water's Edge Drive, or, yeah, Water's Edge Drive there, and that's, they go pick their golf cart up every day and drive it up there to the golf course. And right now, they're not legal.
I might just add that if you want to change something in the ordinance, what you'll need to do is direct us, and then we'll bring it back in the form of an ordinance for your consideration.
Can we, I saw Mitch here earlier, so, Mitch, can I just ask you, I know, when this came back, it came up earlier, there was some opposition on your part, and I'd like to address that, because you're, you're going to be charged with the enforcement side of it, and yet, we already have, we already have some things in place for certain streets, and then we arbitrarily have a couple of streets that were not included in that, that basically lock certain people into a neighborhood that's simply not on the golf course. All we're doing is allowing them to get out of the neighborhood to the golf course. So, what's your, what's your opinion on this?
Well, when we, my opinion has always been, from start to finish, in the best interest of public safety, period. And my opinion is, that should be everybody's first point of interest should be public safety. The reason those streets were left off was due to the high amount of traffic on those streets. If you saw the traffic study, you saw that Hill Boulevard actually has more traffic on it than what Water's Edge Drive has on it. And Water's Edge Drive is, is not as wide as what Hill Boulevard is, except Hill Boulevard has turn lanes incorporated in it, so that makes a huge difference. The other reason why Hill Boulevard was taken off, because it does have blind entries and exits off of that roadway, and the traffic by CBS, Lowe's, and that whole area is extremely heavy, and a golf cart, a golf cart is not conducive in any way for that kind of traffic. I have a hard time believing there's, there's a lot of people on Third Street or Fourth Street that go to Harbor Lakes play golf. If there is, I wouldn't be opposed to letting them go out, but as Mickey said, that street has cars parked on both sides of the road every day, every day. And when you have cars parked on the side of the road, now you're narrowing the width of travel of the cars that are coming down, back and forth on that roadway as it is. And now, we're going to throw golf carts in the mix.
But you're saying there's not, we're not locking too many people in, therefore, there's not going to be a whole lot of traffic? So, we're basically looking at ordinance that will affect very few people?
Exactly right. Exactly right. And I don't know if I would really be opposed of Second and Third, I mean, Third and Fourth Street being included, as in approved street. I, I do not believe in any way, shape, or form, Hill Boulevard needs to be included, strictly because the amount of traffic that is on that roadway every day, from commercial trucks, and just the few, the pure volume of vehicles that are on that roadway all day long. I mean, it's dangerous for cars to exit some of those places, and now, we're going to throw a, a even smaller unrecognizable vehicle in the mix when it comes to the traffic.
Do you think, do you think signs, golf cart signs would help in that situation?
Absolutely not. Not on Hill Boulevard, absolutely not.
Well, Mitch, my question to you is that, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
When you talk about Third and Fourth Street, but you've still got South Town there, those folks in Red Bird and?
That's South Grove, that's not South Grove.
South Grove, South Grove there with the Red Bird and all that, they come out, and they'll, they'll have to get on Hill. They'll have to get on Hill Boulevard to get to the golf course.
And I, and there, and I'm going to tell you, the worst, the worst road intersecting with Hill Boulevard right now is that road. So, now, you're, you're wanting the idea of throwing golf carts in the worst possible place on that roadway, because that's on a curve.
Would it be better to shift them to the other end, Chief?
Sir?
Would it be better to shift them and let them come out the other end then?
Onto Second Street and then go up?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if, if they were going to go that route, for South Grove to get to the golf course, that, in my opinion, would be the best route to go, but I got to tell you, I just had a complaint today that wants the Traffic Committee to review the possibility of installing a four-way stop at Second Street in Harbor Lakes because of the, the problems with people running those stop signs and the speed of the cars coming down from Harbor Lakes and stuff. So, you know, whether, you know, it's, you're looking at, at two high-volume roads. If, if you're going to do this, and you want to allow South Grove to, to be able to have access to the golf course, then I'm, I would recommend that you use Second Street for that avenue to go up. But in saying that, too, I'm not telling you that I'm an advocate of that, so I want to make that clear to you, too, that I, I don't believe that should be done, but it's ultimately your decision on what, what happens here. So, if that is something that you plan on doing, I would encourage that you use the Second Street Harbor Lakes entrance instead of incorporating Hill Boulevard.
Here, here's my problem. I'm just, one councilman up here.
Yes, sir.
You may remark at the last meeting that you did not and would not give a ticket to a golf cart.
Oh, I never said that.
No.
I absolutely never said that.
He said he never has. He did as they would, and he just.
Okay, so never have?
Never have, no, sir. And I, and, and let me explain something. You know, I don't know if I made it clear enough in my report, but Port Aransas. Port Aransas was the first state to incorporate that law and make an ordinance for golf cart use, and they have regretted it ever since. And every year, they make, make the cost and the restrictions to operate a golf cart harder and harder every year to try and load it down. They are overwhelmed with issues with golf cart stuff. They, they are nothing like Granbury, Texas. Their traffic is nothing to ours. I mean, the, the chief down there couldn't believe we were even contemplating it, and when I told him we were already doing it, he was freaked. He said, how can you do that? This is, y'all are not, don't, are no way meant to have golf carts on the road, y'all's traffic is too heavy. And, and that's the key here, is traffic, because when you mix traffic with golf.
Who said that, Chief?
Sir?
Who said that?
This is the chief of police in Port Aransas. He got, this year, the council, because they are trying to reduce all these numbers, gave him an additional line item, because he doesn't have the staff to do this kind of stuff, nor do I, but he gave, they gave him an additional line item of overtime to create a task force strictly on enforcing golf cart violations. That ought to tell you how big of a problem it is down there, and their traffic is minimal, minimal, compared to what the traffic is in Granbury, Texas.
I was there for a week, and I did not see one pulled over on the road or the beach, and we was out there all the time.
I will guarantee you they were pulled over, and if you gave me your week that you were there, I bet I could come back with a number. How many citations were issued that week?
It might have been, and like I said, I didn't see them. But Chief, if, if, why didn't you, why haven't you given somebody a ticket, or your officers, on this?
Well, because my officers are busy taking calls every day.
On golf carts?
No, on everything else. We, we have more, more calls per day that have to do with wrecks on 377 and all over this city, and we worked 1,000 wrecks this last year. I mean, the, the amount of traffic in this town is astronomical. They don't have time to go out and sit and look for golf cart violations. They just don't. We haven't had any complaints. Had we had complaints, we would go out and see what the problem is and address it when we got there. But we don't have time to sit and just monitor golf cart travel. We don't, because most of the golf cart travel is coming from Water's Edge and the residents in Harbor Lakes to the golf course. It's not coming from outside of that area. It's not. So, we don't have problems because these, these vehicles are driving in the areas where they're, they're, the state found it, where they, it would be acceptable to put them in these areas under those conditions, to and from the golf cart. And, you know, they actually made a mistake and expounded that a little bit and gave people a choice, and that is what created the problem. But as long as these people are in the neighborhoods that they're free to ride them in, which is all over the city, and they're not hitting major traffic thoroughfares, which are all those streets that are listed on there as, as not being, as being streets that are prohibited for use, there's not a problem at all. They can do it all day long, they just can't get on the streets that have that high volume of traffic, where it raises the potential of a deadly accident through the roof. So, we keep them off those roads, you can go anywhere else. I mean, you've got to keep in mind, this law was created strictly for golf club communities, period. So, Harbor Lakes, Water's Edge, they drive to and from their residence to the golf course, it's all in the same confined area, that's perfect. We don't have issues. And now, you start talking about people driving outside of these areas, getting on high-traffic val, uh, volume streets to get there. That's going to cause a problem.
Well, Chief, I don't think we're, I mean, because Catalina Bay and, and the islands, they drive them, and they're, they're within about the same distance, or probably further than Third, Fourth, and those streets over there, and, and South Grove is, is out there. So, I agree with you. I, I want to see the same, same thing for those people that live over there, if they, if they choose to own a golf cart. Now, I don't know that we're going to have a whole, I mean, a slew of golf cart, I mean, even with Water's Edge, Harbor Lakes, and, and the islands over there, the discussion was with several people, they don't see the golf carts on the road. I don't see that many golf carts. I know a lot of people own them, but I don't see that many golf carts on the road right now, even in that area. And now, and I got to say, you know, the, the fortunate thing about this, everybody but one council person lives over there, and they see this every day. You ought to get over there. No. But, but it's, I drive it a lot, I, I know Mr. Allen's over there with his, I know Mr. Parsons doesn't have one, but he sees what goes on over there. Mr. Couch there sees it all the time, he's right there. You just don't see that much traffic. But I don't want to take away from those people that have the opportunity to also, within the two-mile radius that we're talking about, within the golf course community, because we got another development that's coming, coming forward, too, and it's right there behind the golf course, but they're going to be wanting to own their own golf carts. Now, some of them older neighborhoods probably won't go and have a golf cart, because they don't have no place to store it or whatever, but if they choose to have one and they want to use it on the golf course, that's because they're going, they want to pay the fee, and they want to be a member of that clubhouse, which I promote, to get this thing up and going over there.
Well, then, I, then I would, I would say that if it, if there's somebody on Third Street or in South Grove or Fourth Street that want to join the country club to play golf, and they want to take their golf cart on there, we make, we make an exception to the ordinance that says if they live in these, in these areas, and they become a member of the golf club, or has got a golf cart and want to go and register it, then they can have use of that, of that, that avenue on Second Street.
And that's kind of what we're doing, with just the short, I mean, I don't think we're looking at all the streets, we're looking at a portion of Water's Edge Drive and possibly Hill Drive. Now, you have to explain, there's two options on Hill Drive.
There's not a portion of Water's Edge Drive, that's the question here.
Harbor Lakes, I'm sorry, Water's Edge Drive, yeah.
Any Harbor Lakes Drive?
Harbor Lakes Drive, I'm sorry, yeah. The, you know, take it, expand it all the way to maybe even Plaza Drive to get, to where you get all those covered.
I, I, oh, well, I'm going to stop right there. Don't, don't throw Plaza Drive into that mix.
I don't want Plaza Drive.
Well, you said up to Plaza Drive, and that, and the traffic at that intersection at Plaza Drive and Harbor Lakes Drive is, is incredibly horrid.
Well, we could name.
We get complaints on it all the time. It's a bad situation, a golf cart doesn't even be near.
We can take it all the way to Second Street then, that would be a dividing line.
I will accept that more than I'll accept Plaza Drive.
I, I agree there.
Mitch, for my indication, the traffic count on Hill was taken behind Lowe's.
Yes, sir.
Closer to Water's Edge Drive.
Yes, sir.
Even past the back entrance to Lowe's, right?
Yes, sir.
So, 31, 36,000 car count was not even close to where the traffic is.
No, it was not.
I mean, it was way back there in the back edge.
It would have been further around the corner, it would have been a lot higher.
If you'd put it at the red light.
It would have been astronomical.
It would have been 50,000.
It had been astronomical.
Now, I talked to Allen today, and it was taken multiple places, though, right? Is that correct?
They were taken there, and they were taken on Water's Edge Drive, just north of where the, that first business strip starts, just, just north of it, back towards Walmart for that.
We were trying to, we were trying to measure the traffic that goes into the islands and all the subdivisions, and then how many from Water's Edge to Hill Drive. So, the intersection over by CBS, we left alone. And we, we tried to do it in two different places, but the equipment failed, so we had to get some different equipment, and then that test is the real test of the data that's provided. The Street Department did that for us. And I was surprised.
I, I was shocked, too. I was not expecting those numbers.
Expecting lower traffic on Hill.
I was, too.
I think there's a lot of people live in that area that goes to Lowe's. It's always full, and I'm not saying there's more, Chief, that doesn't go down to cotton patch and stuff like that, because you've got a strip center there. But a lot of people turn in at Lowe's also on the back way to go in and get their stuff.
Well, I understand, but I'm thinking if they're going to Lowe's to get anything, construction-wise, a golf cart's not going to be good enough to call it, to haul it out.
Test the other place we'd have owned, wouldn't we?
Oh, I can tell you, if we put one around the corner, it's going to be through the roof.
We can test it for you.
It'll be through the roof.
I don't want to waste our taxpayers' time.
Well, the, the thing is, too, I mean, as I mentioned before, these golf carts, if we choose, just like the ones that we've already approved, they're treated like cars. And what, regardless of what the count is, if we took a count, if we took a count on Water's Edge Drive through the golf course and it's spiked, will you kick the golf carts off? No, you just, you, it says you got to man it more, you got to make provisions for it if the traffic gets, I, I don't understand what the traffic count does for us as far as that. These people are supposed to drive them as a car, they're supposed to have lights, they're supposed to be seen with the lights and everything else, and most of them have, all of them have a big top on them, they're not like a little bitty go-kart out there, and.
Well, the difference, the difference is that Water's Edge Drive and Harbor Lakes Drive around is part of a golf club community.
I understand that, but.
The others are not.
Even out there where they come out of, of, of Water's Edge there, that's not part of the golf course yet. They got to get on that main thoroughroad there, and they have to abide by the law. They treat them like a car, so regardless of what the car count is, yeah, we, yeah, it's increasing, and now, it's going to increase more, because we've got a few more golf carts on. We've got a few more people with cars on it, it's going to increase, so we have to make sure that we are monitoring it.
And I, and I'll agree with you that to one extent, in that they're not treated just like cars, because they're not cars, they have none of the safety features that are involved, they weren't designed to be involved in accidents, they weren't designed to do anything but drive on a golf course. There's the big difference. Automobiles come with safety features, seat belts, safety airbags, their, their bodies are, have crunch zones and, and all that other kind of, and a golf cart has nothing.
Should we outlaw motorcycles?
No, motorcycles have been on the streets just as long as automobiles.
No, they don't have it either, so should we?
It, it's a motorized vehicle that has been part of the traffic community on the roadways since the 1800s, so.
They should know that we should do a way with.
Golf carts have not. They were designed, motorcycles were designed to be driven on the highway, roadways, and everything else. Golf carts were designed to be driven on golf courses. That's, that's the big difference.
But I bet you years ago.
You don't, you don't have to have a golf cart certification on your driver's license in order to be able to operate one. Your golf cart doesn't have to meet any safety functions, and motorcycles do.
You have to have a driver's license.
Not on, not on moped, do they? There's kids that ride those little.
Under 50 cc.
Yeah, they, they ride up and down there all the time. My fat woman neighbor's got two, and they go all over the neighborhood, outside the gate. So, should we outlaw them?
I'm not telling you to outlaw anything, I'm telling you a, a difference between a vehicle that is designed to be driven on a roadway and a vehicle that is not. That's what I'm telling you.
I agree with you, Chief, but whenever I take mine out, I ride on the right-hand side, I got the mirror across it, which is part of it, I look back and I pull over to the right, people go around me, I have no problem.
And I, I'm happy for that. I'm happy for that. What I'm telling you, when you mix golf carts in high-traffic areas, especially ones with blind spots, it is a recipe of disaster, and I don't want to have to be the one that faces that family that says, I was a proponent of allowing this to happen.
Let the chief, assistant chief, do it.
Well, and I, and I don't think any of us are, are wanting to take that stance, but we could say the same thing about bicycles, we don't, bicycle, to me, would be much harder to see than a golf cart, and yet, we're not going to, we're not going to outlaw bicycles. So, we're, we're just, we're just trying to make some sense out of some of these, some of these ordinances and restrictions.
Well, what you got to do is, is realize that state traffic law addresses all those Well, what you've got to do is, is realize that state traffic law addresses all those vehicles that you've just mentioned, on how they're to operate on the roadway, the laws for operating on the roadway, and they are considered a mode of transportation. That's why they're listed in the traffic code. A golf cart is not. It was only added when they created this offshoot that you could, a community could allow it in a golf club community in order for residents to be able to drive their golf carts from their home to the golf course instead of having to trailer them. And then they threw in the caveat that a city by ordinance could allow it in areas of that golf course within a two-mile radius. And they left it up to you to decide what was safe and what was not safe, what was a good place to allow it and what wasn't. They just said you could do it, and it's up to you on how you decide to do it.
Well, they also included the safety devices that had to come along with that. They had to have lights. They had to have a mirror. They had to have signals. Some of them even require the seat belt sign.
No. That's by ordinance only.
Right.
It's not by state law.
But.
So I, I erred more on the side of the, of the city who deals with this on a daily basis heavily. It's a city. Unfortunately, that city doesn't have near the traffic that the city of Granbury has and close to it. And they have that many problems. That tells me this is not a thing that we would want in a city with this much traffic.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your recommendations.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Surely not. Have we got a motion or a discuss?
I would like to make a motion that we have the staff draw up an ordinance to remove Number Five, that's the 600 block through the 1200 block of Harbor Lakes, and Number 21, South Hill Boulevard from Section 12.08.004, public streets where golf carts are not permitted.
That basically covers the Hill Boulevard and the Harbor Lakes Drive to Second Street, let's say. Okay? We have a motion, counsel. Do we have a second?
A second, a motion, Mayor.
I have a second by Councilman Allen.
As for clarification for what that was?
Yes, please.
From Second Street to the circle.
Second Street to the circle.
Add that for Harbor Lakes. What was the Hill Drive addition?
The Hill Drive, south. South Hill Drive, not across the 377.
So, and go all the way up to CVS and up into the Chase Bank?
Not if it goes to Second Street.
No. Mayor, it would take, it would take you into the strip center. But you couldn't, you couldn't get on Plaza Drive.
Couldn't get up Plaza Drive. You'd just get up to the Lowe's and the CVS entrance.
But if you.
You couldn't get on Plaza Drive.
Well, there's no Plaza Drive there.
That's true, too.
No.
Second Street.
Well, it's Hill Boulevard, but Plaza Drive sort of dead ends there. It comes, makes that.
But it comes through the parking lot of CVS.
The CVS, what's the street behind CVS?
Nothing.
Middle Ark.
I would, on the motion, Hill Drive, could you make it to where it just goes to the, to the Lowe's? That, man, there's one, two, three, four streets that are unaligned, coming into that. And then there's two aligned entrance and exit from Chase to CVS.
But you're cutting out all the businesses over there. I wouldn't want to change it myself, but.